All right, here we go. Good evening. It is now 7:01 PM on Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. And I'm calling this meeting of the Dayton Historical Commission to Order. Please note that this meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency caused by the coronavirus COVID-19. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on Comcast Local Channel 9 and the Town of Dayton YouTube channel. I'm Pat Gales and I am the chairperson of the Dayton Historical Commission. And with the rest of the members, just identify themselves so we can make sure that we can hear you. Pat?
Pat Olson.
And Pam? Bill?
Oh, what are we doing? I'm sorry.
Just telling us who you are, so everyone knows.
Bill Pruitt.
Okay, Rafa?
Rafa Johnson.
And Ken?
Ken Pacheco, non-voting member.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Of course, all votes tonight will be by roll call, so. Secretaries' report. Did everyone have a chance to review it?
Yep.
Any discussion, changes, amendments?
Well, I... There is a piece in that that references me talking about St. Thomas Church in Taunton. I'm not sure that I meant that to be relative. I don't remember the exact context. Pam, do you remember anything about that? You have it in your report.
I do. I think what we were talking about was the fact that that used to be part of Dayton.
What, what used to be?
That church, when it was founded, please correct me if I'm wrong, anyone offhand, but when the church was founded, it was located in Dayton. So that area of Dayton used to be Taunton?
No, I don't think so, but I could be wrong, but the original church was on Tremont Street, not too far from Light Troopies on Tremont Street.
All right, so Bill, you're saying that's inaccurate in the minutes and you want it struck from the minutes?
I think so. I might have been just referencing something I had done when I did a look up on.
Okay, okay. How do you want the minute? So just should read that Mr. Pruitt is reviewing deeds for 112 Lincoln Avenue, circa 1700s?
That's, that's it, basically.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Bill.
That's all right.
What Pam said is true, but I don't remember Bill talking about that last month. That church and that part of Taunton was part of Dayton many years ago, but I don't remember us discussing it.
Right, so, okay, so under the, for the minutes, we have that amendment. Is there anything else? Okay.
I just have one, oh, on the minutes, just.
On the minutes. Yeah, we're following the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended with Mr. Pruitt's change that he is simply reviewing the deeds of 112 Lincoln Ave. And I will look into that. I don't know what happened. I think it was just when we were discussing the historical.
So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second. Roll call. Pat?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And Pat Gales says aye. Okay, the minutes are accepted as amended. All right. Um, on the budget, the invoice for the Boston Post Kane plaque has been submitted and it should, should be on the warrant this week to be paid. Okay. Community Preservation Committee report. Bill, would you like to talk about that?
Sure. We did, well, I, I brought up the issue by asking Pat when she was on Zoom for that meeting, whether or not we had a fallback position in case the Mass Historic Commission grant did not get approved. And we would know that, obviously, it was, it's supposed to be this month, right? I don't know when we're going to get the word on that, but if that was not approved, then I was trying to figure whether or not the CPC would entertain the idea of revising, before it went to the town meeting, revising it so that, well, or even if they would fully fund it, or they, well, they're going to fully fund it, but would even, would they fund it with the knowledge that we, they weren't going to get the 12 and 1/2 K back? And basically, I was trying to do a little arm twisting there because that's obviously what I would like to see. And so I think the, the members seem to, they're very interested in the thing altogether. That it's, it's a big plus, they think, to, to do this anyway. And I think I saw everyone seemed to be online with revising it so that we would still be able to go ahead with the, the plans. I don't remember anything. There was other, there was another issue with the, the... I forget what the name of that committee is, but they, it's sort of like the Outside Recreational Committee sort of thing. And they, they want 30K to do an engineering study. I don't know if you're interested in this, to do an engineering study for a bike, which would be on basically 138 and then would get down to Hot Street, buckle up there. And down at the end of Hot Street is some sort of planned parking lot. It's not very clear with, and so basically, this money that they would get, and they would get this engineering study, and then they would use that to try for a Massachusetts grant, probably from the Highway Department, or the Highway Commission of Massachusetts, to actually build the, that would mean signs and paint. Everybody's seen these bike ways on the side of the road. And, and so it seemed like there wasn't a lot of good, very many facts on it, and it seemed like they they needed, they wanted to railroad this thing and, and Tim Ryan seemed to anyway, but, but then I brought them up short because I thought we needed more information from, I think his name is Kevin, who was representing the, this project. So the thing was, when I asked him how much the grant was that they were going to try to get to do this from the state, he thought it would be in the vicinity to 500 to 600 K, which is a lot of money. It seems to do paint stripes and signs or whatever else. And so I told, you know, I wasn't in favor after I heard that. I mean, if, if they got the 600K, if they didn't, which is, I can't see the state entertaining that. So the 30K would just disappear. It would get down, you'd have an engineering study which had no, nothing hooked to it, no value. So I think everybody, we kind of, we reverted, we had, I had second for the, for the vote, figuring, you know, everybody's in favor of this. I'm the new guy, so I'm just going to go ahead and do this, but, but then afterwards, I said, yeah, I can't really vote on this. And so, Tim, we had another motion which reversed the decision for the vote. So we backed out of it and it's just in limbo now. I honest, honestly don't think it's a good idea. And Mr. Woods was really the instrumental in bringing up the, the objection to it. So that was, that was the big show mostly for, for last month's CPC meeting.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I, I will be invited back into the March meeting to talk about the grant once again, so. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Um, moving on to unfinished business, the Boston Post Kane. Do we have a next recipient identified yet?
So I made a, I learned a lot today. I made a phone call first to my good friend, Mrs. Souza over at Council on Aging. And she was not familiar with any of the, the top people. She, in fact, didn't even know that Mrs. Rubello had moved, moved on. So she did not at all know the next person, Sister Veronique Mambangue, that we had talked about from the convent. So I called over at the convent.
Pam, she's not from the convent, remember?
Okay, she is from?
County Street. She is not from, it's not a sister from the convent.
Okay, my mistake. Anyway, Alice did not know this woman, so I didn't get very far with her. So I guess our next step will be, I did end up calling the convent, and the good news is their oldest resident is only 95, so we don't have to even worry about the convent. But I wanted to go there and do a story, like for the Taunton Gazette or something. It's very, I was on the phone with this old Sister Anne Marie for about 20 minutes today. And she was really interesting. Little did I know, Veronique is not there yet, but maybe she will be, no. So, um, so Alice wasn't very helpful. She didn't know Mr. Welch either. I kind of just went down the line, seeing if she could give me some insight into, you know, how willing these people might be. But she didn't know the top five people that I discussed with her. So I guess our next step will be that we'll try this Veronique. Her home. Yeah, like, kind of like I did with Mrs. Barbosa, just make a cold call. Probably be the next.
Best thing. Great. On the plaque, we do have the plaque now. I think we should think about getting it hung in Old Town Hall. That's where it's going. So Ken, would that be Tom Ferry or Jim Aguirre?
It would be Tom Ferry, but we want to put it so it's next to the Boston Kane whenever that's, that's done, so you'd have to take a look at, as to where you want the Boston Kane to be as well as this plaque.
So we'd have to, it makes sense to do them both together. That's correct. So I can reach out to Tom Ferry and see if we can get that going. And then we can, I would, I thought it would be nice if we had a little ceremony to unveil everything, you know? Okay.
Mrs. Souza does remind me every time that she has it under safekeeping.
Okay.
And when I was talking with her today, too, she said that she does, she's aware the issues, I guess, we've had before with the sisters receiving it. And so I think she would definitely be on board when, when Pat Olson and I wrote the, you know, requirements that we would like the person to be a 50% resident of Dayton. I think Mrs. Souza is very much in favor of that, too, and she just, again, says, it's great that this is coming back.
Okay, all right, so I will contact Tom Ferry and see about getting the display for the Boston Post Kane and hanging the plaque where it would go. Okay. Our walking tour of the National Registered Districts is coming along slowly. I started working on the people, so I kind of sometimes get lost in the genealogy of it. But it's fascinating stuff, these people and how the families are all intertwined. There's Talbets and it's, it's just amazing. So I was thinking that we probably would want to make a brochure to have available for both of the National Registered Districts, the Quorum Shipyard and for the Wharf District. So if someone would, say, went to Town Hall or they went to the library or to the Historical Society, they could pick one up and they could do it on their own, besides having a lead tour at some point in time. Pat had a good idea, too. Do you want me to share that, Pat, or? You want to talk about it? Go right ahead, okay. To have a PowerPoint presentation of the two districts and do it like through a Zoom meeting, so that it could be online for people to see besides walking. So that's another thing that we can do to help get the word out that we have these wonderful districts. So we're continuing, it's, we're making progress. It's coming along. Does anyone have any questions or anything?
Any idea when the Town Hall will open? Because I'm guessing that would mean we could meet in person, because I'd like to share the brochure that the Old Colony Museum put out for the walking tour that we went on. And of course, that would be very difficult to share during a Zoom meeting.
I don't know when Town Hall is opening. Ken, do you have any idea?
Yes, it was discussed last week at the Department Head Meeting. And a tentative date was April 5th. Right now, they're not opening what's called the new Town Hall, I guess, because these renovations going on, so they wanted to complete the renovations first, and they think they're going to be done by April 5th. Now, I think as far as Old Town Hall, in that room, only 10 people can be there at one time. So I think we could have a meeting, we could have cable tape, tape it if we wanted, rather than have a Zoom meeting. It may also have to be Zoom because the public has a right to be part of it, so it may have to be also a Zoom meeting. But I, I think the first, the second week of April, we're going to start opening it up. I don't think our next meeting, it will be in Old Town Hall. If we, we may or may not be open by then. I am.
Our next meeting is April 9th.
Yeah, so it may or may not be opened by then. I am asking the Select Board to have our meeting. Our next, we got a meeting tomorrow night, and the next one's March 24th. I'm asking that we have it at Old Town Hall, because it's Mrs. Gulat's last meeting, and I thought we should all be together. But like I said, only 10 people can be present already with the Select Board, as well as the Administrator and a new Town, Town Administrator, as well as Administrative, Executive Administrator. That's already five plus cable is six, so the public really won't be there, but at least we could be together with her for her last meeting. So we may have a meeting, a public meeting, it'd be Zoom also on March 24th. But regular meetings won't start until sometime in April, so hopefully, possibly, we could have our next meeting in Old Town Hall.
Kind of a hybrid of meetings now, being open to the public in a building and Zoom, because people have gotten used to being able to attend or watch even on the YouTube channel, so it's a great way to keep the public interested in what's going on.
Well, the good news is, is that cable at Old Town Hall is live now, so we'll, we have a meeting, it's going to be live. Up until recently, it wasn't live. It'd be Zoom, it'd be played later on, but now we're being on Channel 9, right, whenever the meeting's going on, so the public can see it at the same time, so.
Probably, you know, like for the May meeting, we could share that, Pat. That would work.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. The community garden, the naming, the Agricultural Commission did agree to naming the community garden, the James Briggs Community Garden. They were very supportive of that. We also talked about, you know, the marker, and they're interested in the marker, so we would have to put together a proposal, what it would look like. You know, we would have to, we would have to know the cost and, and we would have to think about what kind of description we want for James Briggs, you know, with the history that we want to put on that marker. So I know Pam and Pat, you were going to reach out to Paul at the Trophy Place where we got the plaque. Rafa, you had some pictures that you showed at the last meeting. Were any of those even viable for consideration?
Yeah, sure, definitely, yeah.
Could you do a little research on that?
Costs and everything, yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I started looking at it and I was like, oh, I can't do this. It's overwhelming. I'm going to assign someone. So, okay, great. Does anyone else have anything on James Briggs? Pam?
So Paul, the man who did JC Trophy, he would do that for us. So maybe we can just, I think before we get too far in, we need to decide how large it would be. As you mentioned, Pat, the inscription, which would determine the size and the cost of the plaque. But I, you know, I say, since we've gone with JC, JC Trophy, and he's been amiable with us as far as the lay in the payment, I'd be happy going with him. I didn't take the time, Rafa, to look through. I know when you showed us the last models, those are all great ideas. You know, our only concern, all of us here, was just making sure that it's affixed to something.
Right. And the other thing that we talked about is to schedule a walkthrough to see, you know, in the garden, to see where it would go. Now that the weather is getting nicer, I can reach out, I guess it would be to, what's her name, Jenna?
Jenna Ba, yep.
To, you know, maybe perhaps you could meet us there and explain, you know, about the garden and where it's going to be, all of that, so. I can do that. I'll reach out to Jenna.
I mentioned last month, I think, with the cost of this plaque and the fact that we're putting something there, it should be inside this fence. So we're really not going to say where we're going to put the plaque until the fence goes up, and then you can put, you know, where do you want to put the plaque inside the fence, so it's protected.
Yeah, we can get the details that we need, you know, as we proceed with this, I guess, so. But that is important. I do agree. Okay.
Pat?
Yeah, Bill?
I saw, I have a few things about this topic. One, one of them is, I go by there a lot, obviously, other people do on 138, the site. And why, why is, why does it still look like a bomb went off instead of some, some cleanup? And if they're going to save the wall because it looked like a neat wall, that's fine, but, but you need to have a mason in there to take a wall out of it. Right now, it looks like, looks like World War II bombing, basically. I say that in a slightly, you know.
I think it's still in progress, Bill, you know? I, I really can't answer that, but it looks to me like there's something that's still in progress.
So some, the town is going to come up with the funds or they're going to do the work. In other words, to transition this to a garden means it's going to be transitioned to something, I think, more acceptable in terms of what's left of the house, right? So that's just a comment, but here's the other thing. As far as James Briggs goes, I did some work on, you know, I'm a genealogy freak and I've done a lot of it, my own stuff mostly, but I know where to go and finance.
Yeah.
It turns out there actually were two James Briggs. Now, I'm not saying that the one that the town or the Historical Society or whoever thinks is the James Briggs that lived in that house, but there were two James Briggs in Dayton, and they were, their birthdays were only about eight or nine years apart. But I guess this is the, we're assuming that that house was lived, built by James, the James Briggs, who was the father of Stout Briggs, correct? Okay, and it, but like I say, I, I don't know if anybody has actually looked into who the other James Briggs and that kind of thing, you know? I went to the Old Colony Society and I have a book on just the Briggs family, and I went through it. And that's how I found the two James Briggs. And there's also a James Briggs who's buried in the grave, behind the, what is that, the Community Church now on Elm Street? And I walked in there and I found his, I found the gravestone. It's the James Briggs. I should have made a note of the birthdate on the stone because that would help verify that this is the James.
Right, right.
So.
No, it's good to, to know and make sure you have the correct information for the correct James Briggs when you're doing the genealogy for the people that are in the late 1700s and early 1800s. They all have the same names in there, like James Briggs was, could have been an infant at one point and died, and then they named the next son James Briggs. There was families of Briggs and everyone had a James because the grandfather was a James. So yes, it is important to.
This James Briggs, you know, didn't fall into those categories. Like, he lived a full life. It would be interesting to know.
Yes, he did, yeah.
Who was?
I started looking at some of his genealogy also. And he is identified because he is the father of Stout, Joe George Briggs, so you look for George Washington Briggs as his son, and that's your connection, because he also had a daughter. Was it Polly or Nancy? I can't remember off the top of my head. I think Nancy. And she was, there's also some legends around her, too. Some lore, I should say.
So I'm going to look at to see who the other James Briggs, who was he? And where did he live and that kind of thing. So he was born roughly the same time as the Stout Briggs, James Briggs.
Right, so. Like, with this information, too, we can run it by Myrna as the Town Historian. I know there's information at the Historical Society, so, you know, we have lots of, lots of avenues to explore to make sure we have correct information.
I might just tread lightly on, at this point anyway, on the business of the, what is it, to something, the Forest Street House that was?
Oh, that's on, not, we're on James Briggs right now. That's our agenda item right now.
Are we, did you add that to the agenda, that this business of the?
It's under correspondence.
What does that mean?
It's, it's on the agenda, Bill. We're moving on.
On today's agenda?
Under correspondence. I have it as, because I got correspondence. We'll get there.
Okay.
All right. The Anderson Medal Ceremony, Ken, were you able to get any information?
Yes, it's tentatively scheduled for March 30th. And they're saying it's going to be about 11 o'clock. They haven't firmed it up. I know that we're going to talk about it tomorrow night at the Selectman's Meeting. The plan is to have a ceremony at the gravesite behind the Unitarian Church or Community Church. And then we're going to go to the, the new bridge or the, the old bridge that's going to be dedicated to Mr. Anderson on Elm Street, and then we're going to go to the police station where the Medal of Honor is going to be placed. So there'll be a family, family members at the church at the Summatory who'll hand the Medal of Honor to, I believe it's going to be to Robert Perry, who is the highest veteran in our town as far as, whatever he was, I think it was a Colonel. And then from there, we're going to go to the bridge and dedicate the bridge. We have a plaque for the bridge. And then we're going to go to the police station. There probably won't be any food, if anybody's interested. We talked about that. And probably because of COVID, we really can't get together and have food. So it'll start, I'm told, at 11 o'clock, and we'll see from there. We may or may not have a police escort from one area to the next area. So I can't hear you.
That's wonderful. That's great.
Yeah, so March 30th.
Okay.
And would it be if I called Michael from the Taunton Gazette? Because he also showed interest in being present at this ceremony.
Sure, I think he's planning on attending tomorrow night's Board of Select meeting. I talked to him today about something unrelated, but I thought he was going to attend, so he may have more information, but absolutely, he can, especially if we firm it up tomorrow night.
Perfect.
And the family's coming down. They're going to be here the 29th to the 31st, and we picked the 30th, and I think that's okay with the family, so.
Okay, great.
And Don Hershey will be involved, our Veterans Agent, although we're going to probably be appointing a new Veteran Agent tomorrow night. But I think Don Hershey is going to be the one that's going to be involved in this.
Okay, okay. Of course, I'm not sure if I can be there, but I, if I can, I, I'll be there. Okay. Preservation Planning is next on our agenda, so the Survey and Planning Grant, that, as we know, the application is in. They are actually reviewing applications tomorrow, March 10th, at the Mass Historical Commission meeting. And notifications of the grant will be awarded at that meeting. So hopefully, we should know within two weeks whether or not we got the grant. So that's, that's that. The House Marker Program, I tried contacting the woman who bought the one for the, when. The House Marker Program, I tried contacting the woman who bought the one for the Winslow Davis house. I've had no success. No response. I'll keep trying. We presented the Historical Marker Program to the Dayton Historical Society. And the, the society voted to offer a one-year membership, a free membership to a new member who purchases the, a house marker for their house. So we have that as hopefully a little incentive. That was Raffa's idea. Raffa, you want to talk to it a minute?
No. Everything you said in the letter that you sent to everybody, so I'm all set.
On Facebook.
Yeah, I, I will, actually, I do intend to, to spread it everywhere, in all the pages, certain pages.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we posted it on the Dayton Historical Society's Facebook page. The letter that, was it Raffa? Did you write that letter? Was it you?
Um, I think, well, I sort of like did, but Pat did some editing as well, so. We make a great team.
There we go. Do we want to do some publicity with the reporter, Michael?
Oh yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah. So when we, you know, hook up with him, then we can talk about all kinds of things. Okay. I also thought about if we should have a brochure to promote it, you know, people like to pick up things and look at them as reminders. Is there app not to really go to the website to look at the the link, you know, to the, to the whole program? If we did a little brochures to this is what you can do and here's where you can get it. I think that might be good too. So we can work on that. Moving on to our commission goals. Did everyone take a look at them, to review them?
I didn't.
So how, how are we doing? Good, bad?
I think, I think we're making good strides as far as advancing our, our goals, so to speak. I mean, I'm sure, you know, there's a gazillion more goals that we need to do, but I think we're, we're heading to the right direction, really.
I agree.
Yeah.
I looked at them and we would be so much further along if COVID had not shut everything down, because we were making excellent progress on the vault inventory. We were making good progress on, you know, our inventory of the Historic Homes and Stuff Meeting and working on that. So, those, I think, once we are able to get back into Town Hall and have, you know, in-person meetings, we'll see a lot of progress in those areas. You know, I think if we continue, I was looking at this, we have a goal for segregated schoolhouse there. If we're looking at the segregated schoolhouse, we might want to consider looking at local historic districts in that area, or make, because we're making a local historic district in that area, so we might want to learn a little bit more about how to establish that and what's required. And that might be something that would help with the segregated schoolhouse. Old Town Hall is a historic building. There's a few in that area that are on the list that, our preliminary, preliminary list that we made for the grant. Of course, we've made excellent progress on the Boston Post King goal. Yeah, so I think we're, we're doing okay. I think if we continue on this year with our, with these goals, I think we'll, we'll be good and we'll see some accomplishments.
Can I add, add a few pieces to that, perhaps?
Yeah.
All right, this is sort of sort of bigger thinking on this, but what we, I think we're doing a great job now. I think we're really doing what we have to do. There aren't a lot of choices at this point, other than you know, the sort of promoting, promoting historic value of historic properties in the town and get the town to wake up a little bit on that. However, down the line, and, and certainly we could get grants to perhaps fix up the outside of some of the more important houses to make them more look like, show their age, if you will, rather than vinyl siding or something like that. A lot of these old houses, like the one on Lincoln Avenue, for instance, next to Johnny Store. That was the, I did know those people who lived there. I went to school with Dunn's, then Mrs. Dunn and her son and so forth. And she bought it directly from Dayton Realty in nineteen fifty-one, when, when the, when the mill piled all the houses they wanted to sell into Dayton Realty Company they created. And she bought it in nineteen fifty-one. I think probably, her husband probably worked for Maho, because every, I know the guy that lived in this house where I live, he was the chief engineer of the plant. Further you got up towards, closer to Milliken, then you had the family. So this house was the the, the highest position of a non-family position of the mill, and that was chief engineer. And so what he was given in fifty-one also the option of buying the place, which he did. And then, and so forth and so on. And, but anyway, going, going back to this business, I think if you look at the Newport, if you had a chance to look at that book or not. They did a pretty much, started off pretty much what, what we're doing, which is to get this documentation, you know, and the money in order to do that, that was their first step, because they were they were crashing and burning after the Navy left in, in the seventies. And all of those eighteenth-century houses, there was over almost a hundred. And so, what they did after they got some guts going on here with, with the documentation and so forth, is they formed a different kind of entity than either, they had a, they had a historic commission as well, back then. And they had a Dayton Histor, I mean, Newport Historical Society, not necessarily the Preservation Society though. And, but they realized that they needed a different sort of entity and they, which was independent of the local government. And, so what they created was a Newport Preservation Society, not a Historic Society, Historical Society. Not a commission, wasn't, wasn't part of the town government, the city government. And what that did was created a catchpoint of people who wanted to donate money. And they could, they had, it was an, sort of incorporated so that they could, they had the freedom, they didn't have to ask the permission of the town, as, as we, we are kind of lock stepped into, into the town's government.
They're a preservation group, they're like a friends group. So they're a nonprofit, separate entity from the commission and the local government. You're absolutely right. So those are a different entity.
So what they were able to do was entertain donations, small and large, and act as a corporate decision-maker and point of buying houses that were for sale. They'd have a slush fund. And they didn't have much money initially, but then as they got people interested, money came in. And then once, when a house was endangered, they could, it's still hard to save a house, even, because a lot of times, an owner will make a, will have an agreement with a developer. Doesn't mean the developer yet has bought the property. And a lot of times, if you don't know about that, and they're going to try to keep, keep the town out of it, because they don't want the delay, for instance, and things like that. They'd rather figure out a way to do it otherwise.
To talk about, you know, like a separate entity, that is a whole nother discussion. Perhaps if you wanted to explore that and make a presentation at some point?
It wouldn't be something that the commission would be creating. Again, they don't have the power, or they don't have the authority to do that. The government. But, they could, a lot of times, people that are, I think, there's no reason why people on the commission, meaning us, I don't think of a conflict of interest for some of those same people to be on a nonprofit organization as well, so. So a lot of, I think that would be like a key thing, would people here, we could form that society, if you will, on our own. I mean, I could do it, or someone else in town could do it, someone who's not on this commission.
I think you have to look at, before you start, you have to look at all of the legal stuff with it.
Right, right.
Conflict of interest.
It's way too early, we want to milk, milk the money that we're going to get and, and get that. So. I guess that's it on that.
Okay, thank you. Under other business, we talked about, I had put down in-person meetings on my own notes. I also wanted to let you know, the annual report will be coming up for twenty twenty, so if you want to have anything that you think was important, we did in twenty twenty in there, just send me your ideas, your thoughts on it, and we'll start drafting something. Trying to be a little proactive, because last year, it was like, oh gosh, we have to get this done. Correspondence. I shared the email from Jonathan Gale, our ADA coordinator. That was for your information on making meetings accessible. I took a look at it, also had some good information on using Zoom, so, and some good links. So we have to keep that in mind as we are, we are going forward, that our meetings have to be accessible. I also have an email, which I shared with you from Jim Agiar regarding two thirty-six Forest Street, that house has been demolished. I saw that, so I emailed him. And he responded, which I shared with you, that on the assessor's documents at eighteen ninety. And we know that the, sometimes the dates are not correct on that, but that was the only information that we had as far as a date went. It was actually a nineteen thirty-six construction, so it didn't meet the one-hundred-year guidelines, which is fine.
Well, is this going to be open for discussion, or you're going on?
Yeah, I'm just reviewing right now. So. The other part of his email was considering modifying the demolition bylaw. Because he doesn't, doesn't think that he thought the intent of the bylaw was to preserve buildings without historic, without historic significance. No, wait a minute. Should consider modifying the bylaw. We're now in twenty twenty-one, meaning a building constructed in nineteen twenty-one may be subject to delay. And I don't think, he says, the intent of the bylaw was to preserve buildings without historical significance. And he describes homes built in the nineteen twenties. These homes, although old, should not be subject to this bylaw. This is the problem with implementing language and regulation with the timeline, instead of an actual year. So I wanted to share that, because I had some of my own personal thoughts on it and homes are not significant just because of their age. They're also significant because of the events then and the people that are associated with them. I also happen to believe personally, that history happens all the time, and yesterday is already history. Depending on where you are in your age and what you look at, our children look at the seventies and the sixties as history. The kids that are in schools now think something that happened in the seventies or even the eighties was like ancient. So it's all relative to where you are and to what's important. So that's my view on the historical significance. And I knew that you would all have something to, to discuss, so. Belle, you wanted to say something?
Not a lot, I, I think. Well, my gut reaction is that, but again, I can't narrow down Ms. Agiar's action, regardless whether it's right or wrong, but the first thing we need to know is, has he violated the bylaw? Or in other words, I don't know what that is. I haven't read it yet, I haven't had a chance, but.
I sent you the link for the bylaw, I didn't see that until just before the meeting.
Well, I was trying to scan through it. There's quite a things, quite a few things in there, so I never got to the, I'll, I'll do that for the, before next meeting. So, the other thing was that he, he said it was definitely, it sounded like he said it was definitely built in nineteen thirty-six. I'd like to see some documentation on that. You know, I mean, and as far as just, we don't know about his expertise on dating buildings and so forth. I don't, I don't think he's demonstrated that at all. He's just doing his job, which is what, what he does. I did go online to the Bristol County deeds to see anything I could find out about that house, and it's very interesting. There were only two entries at all in the entire thing. There was no mortgages. It was never, not, not as, at least not as far back as nineteen thirty-nine, which is the big database currently, far back as it goes. And, so I was, and so I went to, I did a search on the Dayton Realty to see if it had been one of the houses that had been sold out of that, and it was not in there. So apparently, what happened was that this was part of Dayton, this was part of, it's, it's owned by DI Trust Two, according to the assessor's database. I'm sure you've seen that already. So I did a search on DI Trust Two, and it's quite, not that many entries, but I didn't see anything at all. You know, grants, grantees or grantors relative to that property. So, I think what, what, what has happened is that house was owned by the mill. And at some point, Milliken purchased the property. You could, you could find out if you, I don't, do some deep dives in the basement in Taunton. But they held on to that, and they didn't even, they did not intend to sell it at any time. So they didn't put it into the Dayton Realty catch-all to sell the house. And there was, Dayton Industries in the eighties, eighty-seven, did buy three acres of some land on Forest Street. It might be connected with that. My guess is, and I've had to deal with DI Trust, because I have land that they wanted to buy off of Forest Street, in fact, about twelve acres, and they were just lowballing me, and I says, forget it. So that was when they were trying to build a, a big development back in, I think, the nineties or something off of, and they wanted my land, so, and I wouldn't sell it to them, because they So I know how they, this DI Trust, I had this gate, so, and dealt with them, you know. And, so my guess, and I know they're very sleazy about trying to make as much money as they can off of this property, and they haven't been very successful, because people go legal on them and Miss, Dr. Seer, for instance, to prevent the short-circuiting of, of my street, Chase Street, all the way to Tremont, and then building houses there. They were unsuccessful legally of doing that. So, so anyway, but my guess is that house was kept there just as a right of way, and, and if they have three or four acres behind that, that's probably why they never wanted to sell the house. It was leased, it was rented and leased all these years. Now, I, I don't know whether or not Mr. Agiar, that he on his own, maybe, Ken, you would know, did, did Mr. Agiar decide the house was in bad shape and then decided to condemn it? Is that why it was torn down, or?
That was, that was my understanding. There were some neighbors that were complaining, complaining about the house. I think the porch was collapsing. Water was getting into the house. But is, is that house that was torn down, is that the entrance for Forest Hill, that new development?
I think so.
It's a hundred and thirty-five houses that, that are going to go there?
Wait a minute, this is something not new, that I, I'm not aware of. You mean a new proposal?
Yeah, they say a proposal, it's going to go before the planning board on March seventeenth. It's called Forest Hill. And it's a hundred and thirty-five houses that are going to go in there. I know it's right off, it's off Forest Street. I wasn't sure if that was the the entrance to it, but it sounds like it is. I haven't seen the plans yet. I will attend that meeting. It's going to be a Zoom meeting. But, I don't know how. Uh, but I don't know how, uh, Mr. Aggyar determined the age of that house. Uh, I know that when I bought my house, the assessors office said it was a hundred years old. It was a lot older than that, so they're not, they're not accurate. I personally don't think, and I, I would like to hear everybody else's view, but I personally would not like the, the bylaw to change. I think a house that's over a hundred years old, it's going to come before us. We may decide it's not worth observing or trying to find, uh, preserve any part of the house or whatever, but I think we can't set a certain date and then it, it changes, you know, every year. We want a hundred years. Any house is over a hundred has to come before us. I don't know if this house was older. Uh, we haven't done any research, but, uh, if he had a definite date when it was built, he doesn't have to come to us. If he has a questionable date, he should come to us, quite, quite frankly, so.
Well, what, what is the procedure that, that he's supposed to follow? In other words, he gets some, somebody even walked in before the.
Why don't we do this, Bill? Why don't we all review our demolition delay bylaw?
Okay.
For next meeting.
Right.
Put it on the agenda to, so that we all understand clearly what our demolition delay bylaw is asking, you know, what it's all about.
Okay.
And then have the conversation.
If I could just add one more thing. I'm not sure if you, you guys attended the, uh, that town meeting when it was voted on the bylaw, uh, delay on demolition. It was a hard-fought battle. I think if we open it up again, who knows what's going to happen?
No, no.
Because you then allow developers to, without even running an old house by yours, to be able to knock it down and put who knows how many houses. So, uh, when you look at that bylaw, keep in mind how difficult it was to get that bylaw and I'd be, uh, I don't think we ought to try and change it.
So I will add that to the agenda for, um, April. And does anyone have anything else? Okay, um.
I'm sorry, should I call Bert down the road and see if she wants to do something in April, awarding, um, the flowers in her mom's honor? Do we feel we want to move forward with that at this point?
I thought that was going to be just you and I and her.
Well, Mike, the talking Gazette man wants to come too, to do a story.
How about if you wait till May, because then um, a small group could get to Old Town Hall, ten people. If you wanted to do that. Why don't you leave it up to her? Ask her if she just wants a small, like, like with the two of you from the, you know, the, the committee, or if she would rather have something, you know, even at a, um, selectman's meeting or something. Or our meeting.
She was, you know, I mean, obviously her mother had just passed when I last spoke with her. Um. I think she's open to whatever we wanted to do. I just thought that is most mileage as we could get out of this. You know, um, not only for our commission, but keeping people aware of the honor of the cane.
Yeah, I, I don't think it should be at a select board meeting. I think it should be the Historic Commission. I think it should be Old Town Hall, especially if that, uh, the container for the Boston cane is already up as well as that plaque. It'd be great. Uh, Mike could take a picture of it. So hopefully it's done by May, but it may not be. Who knows? You'll, you'll get an answer from Tom Ferry tomorrow. Um, yeah, when he has an idea as to when it's going to be built.
I'd be lost to see me.
Waiting a bit, so, uh, even if at least the plaque is hung, I don't know, Pat Olson, what do you think? If the plaque is hung at least, um.
I think Pat's idea about asking, um, Mrs. Barbosa's daughter what she would prefer, I'd be fine with that.
Okay. I will reach out to her and see, um, how she, she wants to proceed, but.
So.
Pretty open and I think that's, that'll make a, I mean, not a nice story, obviously, that Mrs. Barbosa has passed, but good way to kind of get this program back on the road and make people aware. I like it. So, okay, we'll work on that and Ken, I'll make sure that it's kept separate from, um, you know, selectmen meeting. We'll keep it can self-contained with our commission.
Right, we, we should get, or you guys should get credit for it, not the select board, so.
Okay.
Well, I thought and including the, in having the presentation at a selectman's meeting was just to show the importance and how much the town valued this, that the selectman would take time out of their meeting to do this, so that, it was for recognition.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I just think because of COVID, who knows how many people we're going to be able to have in that room, so.
Oh, I agree. I understand that, but that was our intent behind it.
Yeah, I, I think.
Right.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
And, um, Pat Olson, if you, in the past, the folks have gone and been recognized by the select board, right? Is that?
No.
Haven't this election? No?
No, no.
We had like a little get-together, you know, um, one was at the, the convent. I believe one was at the Historical Society had one.
Yes, and, yeah, Patrick Menges, who was a selectman at that time, came to that, uh, meeting. And he may have presented it for all I know, but it was, uh, for Mrs. Cummings. It was there, but this really is the Historic Commission's, uh, goal, and I think you guys are bringing it all back and you ought to get recognized for that. I'm going to be there so I can represent the board. Hopefully I, I can be the, if it's at Old Town Hall, if that's what, uh, she wants. But I think we, like you said, we should hold off until May.
Okay.
At the earliest.
Great. All right, are we good? And, all right, our next meeting is April thirteenth at seven. I had hoped that it would have been a in-person meeting, but more than likely it's going to be a Zoom meeting. So I will set that up and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, wait a minute, announcement. I sign up for a seminar sponsored by the Massachusetts Historical Commission from March thirtieth, from three thirty. It's, um, seminar on establishing local historic districts. So I can't wait to attend the seminar.
Oh, that'll be good. You'll have good information for us.
We need to declare North Dayton as a historic district as well as segregated. District. Thanks before the end of the year. That's a promise.
Before the end of the year.
I'm sorry, Rafa, March thirtieth at three thirty?
Uh, from three to four thirty.
Is that a?
Fill up fast.
This is a meeting, yeah, it's free.
Okay, are we good? Anybody else?
If I get more information on the, uh, Annecy Medal, uh, award, I'll, I'll share with everybody before that meeting, the information.
All right, thanks, Ken. All right.
Can I just ask a question?
What's?
Can I just ask Ken a question? That bridge that's going to be named, I think that's very nice. Does it previously have a name?
No.
Okay, because I know a lot of them are already named. I just wondered if that little section already had a name.
I don't believe it's, uh, got a name.
Okay.
It's nice. It's special.
Yeah.
Um, a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
I'll second.
Roll call, um, Pat?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And Pat Gales, aye. Okay, everyone, have a great night.
Night, yeah. And I be safe.